... June 1st, 2015, Lakewood City Council Meeting. Please rise and pledge allegiance.
(Inaudible). The United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Please join me in a moment's silence.
Anderson?
Present.
Bullock? Juris?
Here.
Madigan?
Here.
Marks?
Here.
Nowlin?
Here.
O'Leary?
Here.
Reading the disposal of the minutes of the regular meeting of council held May 18, 2015.
I move to recede, I move to adopt the minutes without the necessity of a reading.
Second.
Is there any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes. Yes, we're to speak to one.
Item one, Committee of the Whole report regarding letter of intent hospital written and to be provided.
I'll begin with the written. Thank you. Madam Clerk. Dear members of council, on May 18th, the Committee of the Whole met in the council conference room to discuss the letter of intent regarding Lakewood Hospital and two other noticed agenda items. Present were all members of council and many administration leaders as well as members of the LHA Board of Trustees. The trustees were there to provide an update on recent hospital financial information to council. LHA President Tom Gabel indicated that hospital financial losses are higher and more accelerated than anticipated. He stated that this information had recently been learned by LHA and was discussed at their last meeting, which was held with a number of members of the public present. Mr. Gabel informed council that hospital leadership is plugging holes where possible and trying to maintain employee morale, even choosing to keep employees working at times when they should have been perhaps sent home due to lower volume. Other steps to address the current decline have included communication to local EMS squads and advertisements by the Cleveland Clinic to emphasize that the hospital is fully operational. Mr. Gabel indicated that there has been misinformation in the public discourse which seems to be hurting the hospital. He also expressed a concern shared by his fellow trustees that by greatly extending the timeframe for deliberation of the LOI further, employee jobs and financial strength may be increasingly at risk. Mr. Gabel's comments were followed by questions and comments from Councilwoman Marks, Councilman Bullock, LHA members Ellen Burswa and Rebecca Patton. As noticed, there was then a motion to enter executive session to discuss potential purchase of property and or sale of real or personal property by competitive bid, and most of you know the rest, but if the disclosure of the information would result in a competitive advantage, et cetera. When executive session was exited, we agreed to move the remaining agenda items to a future meeting. The meeting was adjourned at 7:32 PM. That's one part and move to receive and file that written part in a second on that. And is there any discussion on the written part of the reported committee of the whole? All those in favor of receiving the written? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. For the other part of the committee of the whole, you can tell, tonight, the committee of the whole met with members of the public and members of the administration, and we discussed a number of different items, starting with a resolution to create the Clean Water Integrated Planning Task Force. Let me get my written notes here. Many members of the public and certainly most council members, the long-term control plan which was required by the EPA was really part of it, was, we avoided having to be, we avoided part of it because of good planning and immediate actions taken by the city and this council some years ago. That proved to the EPA that we were very serious about compliance with the Clean Water Act. So now we're moving into a different phase, which is this IBA, in other, we also, that's our name for what is now known as the Integrated Wet Weather Planning, Wet Weather Implementation Planning.
Improvement.
Improvement Plan, which takes us into another phase. This is a very important topic for all of us in the city because it deals with our infrastructure, our water and sewer compliance with the Clean Water Act. That was one item that was discussed in the committee, moved to adopt the creation of a task force. Another item we discussed tonight was ordinance 2151 to enter into an agreement with a licensed real estate broker to market properties, all happening, all that happened to be in work for, for sale. Three of those properties are, three of those properties are already rehabbed. One, I believe, is already sold, and then there's another property that we added tonight. So we, when that comes up, we will have to move to amend that item. The third issue that we discussed was the mayor for last council meeting, the discussion to enter into an agreement with Everskene Inc., which is an Ohio corporation, or one community, a nonprofit corporation, for the installation and the operation of a fiber-optic system, communication system within the city. What that is going to do, it's planning for our future, is most of what we do here is meant to do, creates a flexible public network with residual benefits for the private sector, which would essentially allow us to plan and to begin a new design for a community access. So those are three, and no action was required on that, but it was the beginning of a discussion, and we will be back in committee of the whole to continue to discuss that. So those were the three big items, and then, as we have for most Mondays since the middle of January, we began to discuss the letter of intent, we got an update from Director Butler, and then I called in executive session. Move to receive and file that oral report.
Second.
Is there discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes.
Item two, Resolution 880315, a resolution creating the Clean Water Integrated Planning Task Force for the purpose of assisting in the development of solutions to address Lakewood's wet weather management needs through community engagement, and to advise municipal officials on transformational improvements that will maximize social, economic, and environmental benefits to the city, its residents, businesses, and institutions for the development of the EPA Integrated Wet Weather Improvement Plan, referred to the Committee of the Whole 5415, deferred 51815.
To adopt?
Second.
Is there discussion on the motion to adopt? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes.
Item two, Resolution 880315, a resolution creating the Clean Water Integrated Planning Task Force for the purpose of assisting in the development of solutions to address Lakewood's wet weather management needs through community engagement, and to advise municipal officials on transformational improvements that will maximize social, economic, and environmental benefits to the city, its residents, businesses, and institutions for the development of the EPA Integrated Wet Weather Improvement Plan, referred to the Committee of the Whole 5415, deferred 51815.
To adopt?
Second.
Is there discussion on the motion to adopt? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes. Thank you, mayor and committee members, whoever you are, whoever you will be. Thank you.
Item three, Ordinance 2115, an ordinance to enter into an agreement with a licensed real estate broker to market for sale, 2126 Clover, 1615 Alameda, 2147 Dow, for a period of 120 days placed on first reading and referred to the Committee of the Whole 51815.
So I'm move to, I'm going to move to amend the motion to include 1585 Newman Avenue. On that, on that motion, Madam Clerk, we call a roll.
Anderson?
Point of clarification, are we given an opportunity to debate the motion before we're voting on the motion to include 1585 Newman?
Well, this is the motion to include it now, so this is just a rule, and will call for discussion.
So you're asking for it to be included before we have the discussion on 1585 Newman?
No, I'm, I'm asking for, do you, yeah, yeah, you can discuss it first, if that's what you're asking.
Yes.
Are you asking to ask about 1585 Newman?
Yes.
Please do.
Very good. So we had a quick conversation, Committee of the Whole, this evening, and I was, I was really thankful for the opportunity to discuss the rehab projects, but I'm still a little unclear as to the timeliness of 1585 Newman in, to the context of the other properties. It seemed to be a bit more timely, and we need to get these things on the market and identify a real estate broker. Wasn't so understanding or completely understanding of 1585's sort of last minute inclusion in this list. Is that as timely as the others, or is there still an opportunity to handle the four and handle 1585 in a separate ordinance?
Madam Chair.
Director Siley?
Thank you, to the councilman's question, 1585 was added as a suggestion of law department, and I concurred, as a matter of efficiency. The true timely issue has to do with the sale of Quail, we have a closing date pending, and those other properties, we'd like to list as soon as possible. Newman, we added based on previous discussions with council for similar lots and similar goals, I think, with community, or meeting the goals of community vision and housing forward to make these productive properties by, it's a vacant lot attaching it to, and you have an interested buyer next door. It was a matter of efficiency. So to your question, if we wanted to separate the Newman property, that's possible, there's no pending deal, we have an open negotiation discussion with that next door property owner. Out of respect to that, we'd like to move forward as soon as possible, but if it was council wishes to separate these items, it wouldn't cause us to lose a deal at this point.
I got you. I may ask a follow-up question, Madam Chair, because you made a nice offer tonight to at least have some opportunity for members of council, myself included, because I'm not familiar with these lots, the 1585 Newman or the adjacent lot that you sort of mirrored into. You made a, an offer to a council member to actually tour this area and give us a better insight from your perspective, as you've represented this world for so many years. I would be more interested in moving forward with the four, separating 1585, at least initially. I appreciate the opportunity for, for efficiency. We're currently on second reading, so we're going to have to, we want to get these four passed, and we're going to have to suspend the rules for these four anyway. I would rather focus on the four, to be real clear with the public as to why we're potentially going to suspend rules for these four and operate with 1585 in its own unique manner. This is my question.
Well, we don't have a second, and so that's part of my confusion with what you're asking previously. We don't have a second on that. So if you, I will call for a second, and if people do not wish to move forward with all of these as amended, then you can vote on all of that.
I apologize, I thought there was a second, and that's why we went forward with the roll call.
Yeah, no, I think, unfortunately, I didn't get a second, so that, if that works, and that's where your opportunity will be.
Thank you.
So, do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
So now the opportunity comes for those of council who personally want to vote to include this as a package. This is just to amend it, to include this Newman Avenue address.
Anderson?
No.
Juris?
Yes.
Madigan?
Yes.
Marks?
No.
Nowlin?
Yes.
O'Leary?
No.
It is three to three. Out of respect for my colleagues who want to tour Newman Avenue, and I will give you directions, I don't know that I can make it there tonight.
Okay.
I am going to, well, that, it was three to three, so let me take that off. So, I'd like to go back and address the other four, address the other four addresses that are there, and to be very clear for members of the public, we were at three to three, but people were not interested, were not ready, quite ready, to consider Newman Avenue, fortunately, in my opinion, but I am respectful of that. So what we will do is now consider ordinance 2115 with four locations, 2126 Clover, 1615 Alameda, 2147 Dow, and 2126 Quail. And, did I get them off? And 12217 Clover. Those are the, those are the addresses. So I move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, and first, I'm going to move to suspend the rules so that we can address this without that other address. So I need a second on the move, motion to suspend the rules.
I'll second that.
Madam Clerk?
Anderson?
Yes.
Juris?
Yes.
Madigan?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Nowlin?
Yes.
O'Leary?
Yes.
And that motion passes and move to adopt?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Anderson?
Yes.
Juris?
Yes.
Madigan?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Nowlin?
Yes.
O'Leary?
Yes.
And that motion passes.
Item four, Resolution 880515, a resolution to enter into an agreement with Everskene Inc., an Ohio corporation, or one community, an Ohio nonprofit corporation, for the installation, operation, and maintenance of a fiber-optic communications system within the city, without the necessity of bidding in accordance with Lakewood Codified Ordinance Section 11104A10, in an amount not to exceed $900,000, referred to the Committee of the Whole 51815.
Move to defer?
Second.
Is there any discussion? This is one for the members of the public that I recorded out on earlier, and we will continue to contact this. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes.
Item five, Ordinance 2215, an ordinance to amend various sections within Chapter 1129 Signs of the Codified Ordinances, in order to update the code placed on first reading and referred to the Committee of the Whole 51815.
Move to place on second.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes.
Item six, Ordinance 2015, an ordinance authorizing the transfer in advance of certain funds placed on first reading and referred to the Finance Committee, 51815.
Move to place on second.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes.
Item seven, Communication from Councilmember O'Leary, Anderson, Bullock, Marks, and Madigan regarding human rights and anti-discrimination legislation.
Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Marks. Thank you. Dear colleagues, imagine losing your job, being kicked out of an apartment, or being denied an opportunity to rent, or denied service in a restaurant, or the opportunity to shop in a store, just because of who you are or whom you love. Most citizens in Lakewood don't realize that one could be fired, convicted, or denied service because of their sexual orientation or gender identity. There are no laws at this time in Lakewood to protect all people from such discrimination. Recent surveys show Americans in Ohioans in particular overwhelmingly oppose discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation and gender identity. A poll conducted in 2013 by Goodwin Simon's Strategic Research demonstrates that 79% of Ohio registered voters believe that laws should be passed banning discrimination in employment, housing, and public accommodations based on both sexual orientation and gender identity. Twenty-one of 50 states currently protect people from these discriminations, allowing those states the opportunity to recruit and hire the best and brightest operational talent. Ohio is not one of those states which craves a competitive disadvantage. Lakewood is considered a unique city that is progressive and embraces diversity, prides itself on being open to everyone. Our diversity encompasses both cultural and socioeconomic aspects of our community. As a city, we must demonstrate that Lakewood stands for protecting the rights of all people because we condone discrimination when we fail to condemn it. Lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender individuals need to be included in those protections. This proposed ordinance seeks to guarantee that all people in Lakewood are free from all forms of discrimination, whether in employment, education, housing, or public accommodation. Updating our laws will help to ensure that all people in our community, including gay, lesbian, and transgender individuals, are protected from these discriminations, will create a stronger community, setting a standard for others in Ohio to follow. Doing so will encourage the best and the brightest to seek homes in Lakewood and definitively demonstrate that Lakewood is open for business and open for all. To be a community where everyone feels welcome, where equality, diversity, and inclusiveness are universally valued, and where our government protects the rights of all people, we must take a stand. It is time that our city's laws match our city's professed commitment to justice and fairness. Thank you for your consideration. We look forward to working in a thorough and inclusive legislative process to produce an ordinance that provides meaningful protections for our citizens' rights. Respectfully, Ms. Lee, thank you.
Thank you, sorry, Councilwoman Marks, I thought it was Councilwoman Sari who was reading that. Move to receive and file a communication?
Okay.
Is there any discussion on the committee?
Madam Chair, thank you very much, and I want to first acknowledge the work on this issue that has been done by a number, a great number, of our council colleagues and predecessors, as well as individuals within the community, both individuals who are here with us tonight, council members, as well as former council members and others. So there really has been a tremendous amount of leadership on this particular issue throughout the history of Lakewood. But, that being said, our code still has some of these protections under chapter headings with things like ethnic intimidation, and it speaks to the fact that these, a lot of these protections really haven't found a place in our code, and our definitions in these protections have not caught up to the reality that we live in today. So I don't think that this proposal is anything too foreign to Lakewood, or really anything that new. I would say, though, instead, that this really, the idea that drives this is that our laws should rely on the self-evident truth that we're all equal, not the expectation that we're all the same. And I think that this ordinance sets out to do this. It builds upon the great work that many of our forbears in this community have undertaken in the past, whether or not it was immigrant communities that were facing ethnic intimidation back in the 30s and 40s and 50s, or before, or racial, or sexual discrimination, and so now, too, we need to make sure that our laws are protective of all Lakewood citizens. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there any further comment? On the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes.
Item eight, Ordinance 2315.
Move to place.
An ordinance to amend certain provisions of Chapter 516, Chapter 537, Chapter 142, Chapter 501, and Chapter 1327 of the Codified Ordinances of the city, to ensure that all persons within the city have equal access to employment, housing, public accommodations, and education.
Move to place on first and refer to rules and ordinances?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes.
Item nine, Communication from Council President Madigan regarding request for master agreement discussion.
I'm going to withdraw the communication. Item 10?
Item 10, Communication from Council President Madigan and Law Director Butler regarding proposed third amended charter of the city of Lakewood.
I will repeat this. Dear members of council, you will recall that on August 15th, 2014, after an extensive and comprehensive review process, the 2014 Charter Review Commission submitted the proposed third amended charter of the city of Lakewood for your consideration. Following this letter is an ordinance that, if adopted by at least five council members, would submit the proposed third amended charter to the citizens for a popular vote in the general election to be held on November 3rd, 2015. Council might either send the entire proposed charter to the voters as written, or make changes before doing so, or even reject this proposed version outright. But if council is to send any charter changes to the voters for approval, the ordinance calling for a popular vote must have an effective date that is not sooner than July 3rd, 2015, and not later than September 4th, 2015. Thus, in light of the customary August recess, it would be advisable for us to aim for this action before the end of July. So I move to receive and file that communication.
Second.
Is there any discussion on that communication? Great, we're all in agreement? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 11, Ordinance 2415, an ordinance providing for the submission of the electors of the city of Lakewood a proposed third amended charter of the city.
Move to place on first reading and refer to the Committee of the Whole.
Second.
Those in favor? On that motion, and second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes.
Item 12, Communication from Councilmember Anderson regarding Madison Avenue parking. Councilwoman Anderson?
Thank you. Dear colleagues, I'm sure we all appreciate the tremendous and necessary work to repair the length of Madison Avenue for benefit of residents and business owners alike. This project appears to be expert-led and will be explored as quickly as possible. My opinion that Madison Avenue has never been busier may be supported by the fact that I've been contacted by a number of business owners, and more than one specifically, in a couple of the other areas, concerned about weekend parking. The question I keep being asked is whether adjustments can be made to make sure most, if not all, parking spaces on Madison Avenue specifically can be regulated to prevent cars from being parked in the same spot in front of our most busy retailers for entire weekends. It's my belief that Madison Avenue reserving project provides an opportunity to discuss options to maximize customer weekend access to parking on this floor, perhaps extending weekday meter restrictions to Saturdays and Sundays, a possibility. Additional options may exist, and I would not be surprised if members of the mayor's team have already started thinking through this issue. Whatever the options, I feel this topic is worthy of discussion, ask for the support of my council colleagues and the administration, and explore this issue further. Yours in service, yours truly, as per this communication to be received and filed.
Second, on the motion to receive and file the communication, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 13, Communication from Finance Director Pay regarding 2016 tax budget.
Director Pay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dear members, dear members of council, this communication kicks off the 2016 budget season with the tax budget. It is a resolution to allow the city of Lakewood Finance Department to submit the 2016 tax budget to the Kuyahoga County Fiscal Officer for review and approval to maintain the city's existing property tax rate of 17.44 mill. This will need to be submitted to the county fiscal officer on or before July 20th, so please refer to the Finance Committee, and the document will be presented in committee for discussion. Thank you.
Move to receive and file that communication?
Second.
Discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes.
Item 14, Resolution 880715, a resolution approving the tax budget of the city for the year 2016, and authorizing the filing of the same with the Kuyahoga County Fiscal Officer.
Move to refer the resolution to committee, to the Finance Committee?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Oh, Councilman Bullock?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick preview, Director Pay, do we, are we in a bull or bear market here? Do we anticipate increases in our tax receipts for the coming year, based on the assumptions that you are making?
Councilman Bullock, to answer your question, this is for property taxes, and this, the estimated amount to be collected will be presented to us from Kuyahoga County, so we don't get to come up with those numbers. But when we do, we will share.
Thank you. Is there any further comment? On the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 15, Communication from Human Services Director Jel Samino regarding Title III of the Older Americans Act 2016-2017 Proposal.
Director Jel Samino?
Dear members of council, the Department of Human Services Division of Aging will be submitting a proposal to the Western Reserve Area Agency on aging to continue to support ongoing community-based senior social supportive transportation and nutrition services for the 2016-17 program years. Attached for your consideration is a resolution authorizing the mayor or designate to submit the proposal, a requirement of the request for proposal, and to enter into a contract for services upon receipt of the grant award. Title III Program Title III program services for residents aged 60 years and older include transportation, home-delivered and congregate meals, and social and supportive services. In 2014, the Division of Aging served 40,239 meals, provided 8,753 one-way trips, and 624.5 hours of supportive services using these Title III program funds. I respectfully request your approval prior to the July 10th, 2015 proposal application deadline.
Move to receive and file that report.
Second.
Any discussion on the report and the motions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 16, Resolution 880815, a resolution authorizing the mayor or his designee to apply for and enter into an agreement with the Western Reserve Area Agency on Aging for Title III of the Older Americans Act Senior Community Services for the 2016-2017 program years.
To place the Resolution 8808 in the Human Services Committee for consideration?
Second.
Is there discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 17, communication from Planning and Development Director Siley regarding modification to the Rockport Square Plan Development.
Director Siley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of council, direct your attention to my correspondence. I'd open with nothing the world can take the place of persistence when it comes to Rockport. We've been working with our partners at Forest City now for several years through fits and starts to try to reinvigorate the incomplete development on the east end of Detroit. They've come forward most recently with what seems to be a very viable proposal with a new partner who would require modification of the plan development to allow for approximately 51 for sale townhome units. We'd ask that this be referred to the Planning Commission to begin the Planning Commission's deliberations and review, and to ultimately make a recommendation to council, which will inform the next docket item related to the development agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Siley. Move to receive and file the communication.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I will say that the first take on this was already at, in committee, in the Planning Commission, I mean, in ARP, and it was interesting, and I think well-received proposal. Thank you. Let's move on.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I think you've had this noticed a couple of times on our Committee of the Whole docket, because of other priorities we've not been able to get to this. So is that not the case?
No.
No?
This is new to you tonight?
This is new. Okay.
From Director Siley, it has been, it has been in committee before, not our committee, it's been in JAB.
So the point I'm driving at is, I'd welcome, you know, a full discussion and description in council, sooner or not later, because there's a lot of moving parts and such things, such as the design, the site plan and management and all this. But it certainly is exciting and welcome news that a development proposal that was envisioned back in 2003, and sort of before the Great Recession, before the stall out of the housing market, is now back into potential motion. So that's good news. I just would love to spend some time in council as well, and I have not had the chance to go to the Architectural Board Review. Thanks.
And for the motion on the floor, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 18, communication from Planning and Development Director Siley regarding proposed revision to the Rockport Square Development Agreement.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And members of council, again, building on my earlier comments, this is the development agreement written more than 10 years ago, relates to Rockport Square. Based on the current proposal, it will require a modification, and as I suggested earlier, informal conversation with council members. This will be an iterative process, so my hope is that we refer this to the Committee of the Whole, and begin our deliberations on what ultimately this development agreement's going to look like, informed by both recommendations from the Planning Commission and the Architectural Board Review. Thank you.
Move to receive and file the communication.
Second.
On the motion and second, is there discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes.
Item 19, Resolution 880915, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an amended agreement with Rockport Square for the development of the remaining phases of the Rockport Square Development Project.
Move to refer this resolution to the Committee of the Whole.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 20, communication from Police Chief Maule regarding H. School second grade class donation of $156.10 for K-9 unit.
Hey, dear members of council, Lakewood Police Department recently received a donation by a second grade class of Mrs. Business at H. School. The class raised $156.10 through a fundraiser and wished to donate these funds to be used for the benefit of the Lakewood Police Department K-9s. Upon fulfilling requirements, the LCO were notifying Lakewood City Council of the donation in excess.
Can she?
Basically, they had a lemonade sale.
That's great. Move to receive and file the communication.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yeah, I've had the great pleasure of two of my children going through Mrs. Business's class, and I've actually read to some of them some news back a couple of years ago. I'm incredibly engaged, what a gift to Lakewood, Lakewood Schools, and what a gift for a year of unity. And I encourage my colleagues just to make a phone call to the school the next week or so before folks let out, just to signify your appreciation. I know I plan on doing so. So thank you for having the time to do that, if you're making this part of argument tonight.
On the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 21, communication from Police Chief Maule regarding anonymous donation to K-9 program training.
Chief.
Dear members of council, Lakewood Police Department recently received a donation by a Lakewood citizen who wishes to remain anonymous to supplement the cost of purchasing a new K-9 gun and the training associated with the handler of the K-9. After the first donation was received, the same citizen contacted Lakewood Police Department and requested to donate the remaining amount to recover the full cost of training for the K-9 officer and the purchase of the new K-9. This remaining amount is $4,350 of the total of $14,350 we've been donating. Upon fulfilling requirements, the LCO were notifying council of this donation, and no lemonade assault.
Move to receive and file the communication.
Second.
On the motion, is there any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes.
Item 22, liquor permit transfers for D5, D6 to game on Lakewood 17103 Detroit Avenue from Johnny Morley's Lakewood.
Councilwoman Bullock.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We are in pursuit of a report from the police and from the law department, which indicated no statute for a reason to object, but I defer to my word, council colleague, Ms. Ray Anderson, whose neighborhood this business is located in.
Thank you. And a couple of conversations with Officer Morley and others, no reason to object, look forward to this establishment, re-establishing again. You did nothing right, and so no reason to object. Thank you very much.
And I hope the NBA Finals will help this new business get off to a good start. Move to file with no objection.
Second, on that motion, is there any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion passes. That brings us to the conclusion of our docket. There are many people signed up to speak today. I'm going to remind everyone, as I will from now until the end, that our public comments do have a protocol. I read them last time. I think we're all familiar with them now. Everybody gets five minutes. The clerk will time everybody. We will respect your time and ask you to respect each other's time, and we'll move forward as we did last month. So, thank you. Just know that ahead of time. If you have any questions at the end, we'll stick around also. First person to speak is Pam Smith, and please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Madam President. My name is Pamela Smith. My address is 1528 Elmwood Avenue. I, a group of people, including myself, delivered a letter to council members last Thursday, and I would like to read that letter into your record and to make a short statement. Dear Lakewood Council members, in a recently published letter to City of Lakewood Law Director Kevin Butler, Chris DeVito, identified as an attorney, claimed he is representing all residents and taxpayers of the City of Lakewood. That letter represents Mr. DeVito's point of view and mischaracterizes that he represents all Lakewood taxpayers. In fact, Chris DeVito does not represent us, the 100-plus undersigned, each of whom is a resident and taxpayer in the City of Lakewood. There's no argument. Lakewood Hospital is the valuable and important community asset. Since the proposal concerning its conversion from an inpatient to an outpatient facility was announced, a number of meetings have been held to explain comprehensively the rationale to the community and to give residents ample opportunities to ask their questions and express their concerns. In our opinion, the 100-plus undersigned, the letter of intent represents a promising redirection of resources to support health and wellness of our community in the 21st century. This proposal is a sensible beginning to the serious negotiations that lie ahead. We ask you to be part of Lakewood by changing the paradigm of medical care for now and the future. Help us to become a measurably healthy city that's the envy of our neighbors, our county, our state. We ask you to think boldly and welcome community input in the exciting possibilities for the redevelopment of a significant parcel of land in our densely populated city. Thank you for your service on our behalf. Signed by 100-plus people. In the way this came about a few weeks ago, four of us, Linda Beebe, Mary Osburn, Maryann Krantin, and me, asked each other if we should present our perspective of the Lakewood Hospital discussion to City Council. Why? Because we noticed that other people were speaking as if they knew what we wanted, and they did not speak for us. One of us wrote a letter draft, the rest of us chimed in with edits and suggestions, keeping this letter short and simple. We mentioned it to a few friends who said they wanted to be included. It was not a community-wide effort, but when our numbers reached over 100 in just a week or so, we knew this letter should be delivered to you promptly. My husband Tom and I moved to Lakewood 40 years ago, and have raised our family here. We've been in Lakewood Hospital many times, but never spent a night there. We've had lab tests and x-rays, I've had mammograms and once an MRI, Tom had varicose vein surgery, and during a very stressful visit to the ER, we learned that Tom did not suffer a heart attack. Thank goodness. I've been doing some research on healthcare in 2014 and where it's going in the future, and it turns out that we in the Smith household, we're ahead of the curve. Outpatient care is now the norm and the future. Emergency care doesn't start in the emergency room. It begins with the emergency personnel taking corrective action, perhaps even in your home with you, and in the emergency vehicle, perhaps saving your life well before you even get through that sliding glass door. I ask you to approve the letter of intent and begin the work on the definitive agreement so that we may have a first-class medical facility in the heart of Lakewood. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person signed to speak is Maryann Krantin. And Pam, thank you for all of your service on Lakewood City Council, Pam is a 12-year former councilperson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. Maryann Krantin, 17895 Captain's Code. Like Pam, my family's lived in Lakewood for 25 years. We have been to Lakewood Hospital many, many times, never once overnight. We are also part of the model of healthcare. I'm here to ask you, council members, not to be distracted from the role you are obligated as elected officials to carry out. That is to protect Lakewood's future by positioning it for stability and for growth. Here's a reminder of our harsh reality. Cuyahoga County ranks second in the country in population loss. Poverty has moved to the suburbs. Over 50% of Lakewood City School students qualify for free or reduced lunch programs. In the heart of Lakewood's downtown business district stands an underutilized inpatient hospital in an outdated building. That facility is surrounded by increasingly vacant and technologically obsolete office buildings. You have in your hands a letter of intent that provides for $34 million, brand-new, state-of-the-art, 63,000-square-foot family health center in emergency room in the central business district. This letter of intent also provides for the possibility of two community foundations with assets totaling over $45 million, which could very conservatively fund $1 million in community wellness activities annually. Through negotiation, the LOI also holds the reasonable potential of opening up nearly five acres of land for redevelopment in the downtown district. Lakewood residents deserve a healthcare delivery option that is new, is modern, and can be easily accessed and navigated. Lakewood deserves a healthcare delivery model that services the healthcare needs of our 21st-century population, not the pre-Guhul 1996 model, or the pre-A affordable care act 2005 model. There is so much work to be done to negotiate the terms of the definitive agreement with the Cleveland Clinic, which, by the way, Love 'em or hate 'em, is a globally recognized medical provider that wants to invest and build a facility in Lakewood. Again, please do not be distracted by what could have been, or what should have been. Please use city resources, precious as they are, both human and financial, in your own intellectual capacity and elected authority to deal with the reality of today, and to poise our community for growth. This responsibility, this opportunity rests squarely on your shoulders. Please do not let it slip away. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Pam Wetula.
Good evening. I'm Pam Wetula, W-E-T-U-L-A. I'm at 11813 Clifton Boulevard. I've lived most of my life in Lakewood. Lakewood Hospital saved my life after being misdiagnosed at an urgent care. I ended up in Lakewood Hospital under a doctor affiliated in the facility on Madison, who sent me directly to the emergency room at Lakewood. So my mother was a nurse at Lakewood for 30 years, a night supervisor for over 15 years of that. So I want to say a few things, and I thank you for listening. I really am appalled at the path that you have taken regarding the future of our hospital, and it is really quite obvious that this plan has been in effect for many, many years. This is not something that just happened this last year or two. The clinic has not been forthright, and I am at a loss to understand how our Lakewood representatives would accept CCF directives as our future. In Lakewood, we have a city that is vibrant. We are in the mode of redoing all the city schools. We have a magnificent new library. We have a distinctively new and bright and big YMCA that also includes some wellness. We have the Beck Center. We have our parks. We are redoing our infrastructure. All of these areas of Lakewood have been working hard to maintain the physical and the economic strength that we need to continue as a strong inner-ring suburb, a topic that's been under discussion for 20 years now. We are doing it here in Lakewood. I'm not going to list all the unbelievable assertions that I have heard put forth as to why the demolition of Lakewood Hospital is inevitable. Those items have been categorized in the Lakewood Observer and other places. The truth is that Lakewood has options and viability. Those things need to be taken seriously, including the very appealing possibility that Metro Health could manage Lakewood Hospital. A wellness center does not trump a hospital, period. If it did, then Cleveland Clinic Foundation would be building a wellness center in Avon, Ohio. And this thing about a new direction and a brand-new building, we are being distracted by the word "new." I want you to remember that. I want you to remember that the word "new" is not synonymous with "better." Sometimes, "new" is just "new." If you want a wellness center here in Lakewood, build one, but not at the expense of Lakewood Hospital. Find the money. Do it in addition to Lakewood Hospital. This addition of a wellness center could enhance the services we have already been building this last 10, 20 years to bring families back in state and be vitally strong. Closing Lakewood Hospital diminishes us. We could enhance with a wellness center. I urge you very strongly to reject the letter of intent and to pursue the means to keep Lakewood Hospital alive and prospering. I urge you to look further into all the options that we have to maintain Lakewood Hospital and to not cave in to Goliath, AKA Cleveland Clinic Foundation's demands. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next person is Tom Monahan.
My name is Tom Monahan. I live at 1487 Waterbury Road in a house that was built by Dr. Graver in 1904, mortgaged in 1907 to build Lakewood Hospital. Dear members of council, on behalf of the committee to save Lakewood Hospital, we would like to request that City Council direct their medical and other consultants to prepare a draft of new requests for proposals for the continued management and operation of the hospital. It is evident that the trustees prior to requests for proposals issued by their consultant, subsidiary was poorly managed and apparently did not properly consider legitimate options that would have ensured the continued operation of our hospital. With recent revelations of the Metro proposal, it is clear that confidence in the process has been compromised. Therefore, a proper and transparent process must occur so that the public may have trust and confidence in this process. It appears from recent communications from Metro Hospital to the mayor that there is a continued interest in pursuing discussions concerning the future operations of Lakewood Hospital. Those discussions should be vigorously pursued, and councils should facilitate those conversations by taking the appropriate steps to allay Metro Health's concerns that were raised in their May 26, 2015 email. In addition, we recommend that City Council consult with their attorneys on a strategy to file a cross-claim against the Cleveland Clinic in the lawsuit to indemnify the City of Lakewood for all costs and damages associated with the clinic's mismanagement of the hospital assets. In the meantime, this council should send a strong message to LHA and the Cleveland Clinic that there remains a continuing duty to operate Lakewood Hospital as a full-service medical facility. Council should be scrutinizing all activities related to the operation of the hospital while these matters are pending. And lastly, I am sure that we all can agree that there are many lessons that will be learned from this entire episode. And one of those lessons will be how we, as a community, exhausted all our efforts to save our hospital and preserve this institution that has been part of our community for over 107 years. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person is David Stein.
David Stein, 1495 Clifton Place. Members of council, I laid my notes down. I've said, I think, everything that has been on my notes or on a notepad for the last five or six months. I urge you to look at the LOI. I urge you to make a decision. I do think "new" is important. I do think the future of Lakewood is important. I do think us looking at health in the 21st century is a pinnacle reason to approve this LOI. I'm hearing a lot of issues with the Cleveland Clinic, and I think it becomes very personal. You either like or dislike the Cleveland Clinic. I look at this as a resident and as a business owner that the Cleveland Clinic is someone that is willing to step up and make an investment in our community, just like I have over the years. So, I urge you to make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stein. The next person is Lori Allen.
Good evening. Lori Allen, 1222 Ramona Avenue. I wanted to make a few comments regarding the fiber-optic communication system that is currently being proposed for the City of Lakewood. For several reasons, I do not feel that this is a very beneficial use of funds at this time. First, numerous side streets of Lakewood are in severe disrepair and have a pavement condition rating of less than 65, meaning they are in fair to poor or worse condition. These streets include, but are not limited to, portions of Lincoln Avenue, Brown, Richland, the northern portion of Ridgewood Avenue, and the southern portion of Newman Avenue, along with many others. When citizens are driving on rough, pitted roads, I feel that resurfacing them should take precedence over an upgraded communication system. Secondly, it has come to my attention that our public works vehicles are breaking down on an almost daily basis. When these trucks break down, our workers must spend time taking the broken-down vehicle to the repair shop to exchange it out for another vehicle that runs correctly. Sometimes, two or three of our garbage trucks break down in one day. It has also come to my attention that numerous snowflows broke down on the road during snowstorms this past winter. Instead of a new communication system, I feel that councils should first ascertain that our public works personnel have safe, reliable equipment. This would benefit both the citizens and the workers. Additionally, it appears that there is no money to repair or replace broken and vandalized playground equipment at our city parks. I feel that the youth in our city should be able to enjoy a playground that functions and is not riddled with graffiti, which sometimes consists of colorful language. Finally, I thought I would mention that according to the latest Cleveland Magazine, we, Cleveland Magazine, excuse me, crime has increased in Lakewood over the past year. I feel it would be more beneficial to hire more police officers instead of having the latest communication system. To conclude, I feel that the approximate $900,000 could be much better spent concerning the current state of affairs in Lakewood. I urge councils to reject the proposal for the fiber-optic communication system. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Dean Dillsell. I'm at 1276 French Avenue. And this is essentially a request for information from Mr. Summers. In a letter you sent to the president of Metro Health System on May 18, 2015, you stated that you are duty-bound, as mayor, to explore every option available to the citizens of Lakewood. The Metro Health response presented four prerequisites. Representation, number one. Representation and warranty supported by indemnification from Lakewood Hospital Association, Lakewood Hospital Foundation, and the City of Lakewood that requesting and responding to such a proposal does not constitute tortious interference. Two, a clear, transparent, and time-driven proposal assessment process. Three, updated data set and information for 2014 and year-to-date 2015. And four, discussion with our partners, Premier Physician Group and Cuyahoga County Executive Council to determine continued interest involvement. The citizens of which you represent, whom you are duty-bound, as mayor, are entitled to know what have you done to resolve those four prerequisites, particularly in regard to the requested indemnification regarding tortious interference. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person to speak is Coletta Graham.
Coletta Graham, 1286 Chase Avenue. As well you know, I have come to two previous council meetings in regards to why my street had not been repaved. And I am not the only person that is making the phone calls in regards to this. And finally, Friday afternoon, they came to patch, I use the term lightly, the street. And they weren't even at the end of the street when the inspector was busy axing everything he could get his hands on. So, we are obligated to replace or repair different sections. And I'm a layperson, but in my personal opinion, the sections that I was cited for, they didn't even have an ax. He just did put a line on it that it was, um... People go trip. But they're absolutely, I think, it was ridiculous. I do want to say one thing. I want to thank the mayor because a lot of people might not know this, but if any of the flags, the sections, are near a City of Lakewood tree on the tree lawn, you will not, they will not, we will not be assessed for that. Excuse me. But the flags that are around the tree you will have to pay for. And I was told they're $750 apiece, which is quite expensive. And one last thing. Saturday, we had a going-away for our priest. His name was Father Ken Wallace. And he was the priest that went to Lakewood Hospital. And he did a wonderful job. And over the weekend, they took the tabernacle out of the chapel at the hospital because there isn't going to be any replacement. And it's really such a sad loss. And it's another, just another stab in the back for the people trying to keep our hospital open.
Thank you.
Edward Graham, 1286 Chase. I was glad to hear that a little earlier in the docket, you were going to sell some unproductive real estate that the city apparently owns and change it into productive property. Along those lines, I would suggest that you consider selling the property on Madison Avenue near Bell that was, at one time, a parking lot with parking meters in it, but for some unknown reason, the meters have been removed, which means we are owning a property that produces no income itself and, at the same time, doesn't produce any real estate taxes because it's owned by the city. So, I would think that if we're going to try and get property to be productive, that that property probably should be liquidated or at least put the parking meters in like we have on Bell Avenue. And another one of your items was about Title III transportation, which makes me wonder whether or not that Title III transportation will take people up to Avon to the clinic property out there, which is quite a drive where there's a lot of people over 60 in Lakewood who don't have cars to make it out there. And along the lines of the healthcare, one of the comments an earlier speaker made was that the clinic would be bringing a business to Lakewood. However, it's neglecting the fact that it would be quitting out of business to hire the largest employer in the city. Those who are talking about having a wonderful new facility don't seem to have any interest in the thousand jobs that would be lost in our city and the people put out of work and the, excuse me, and the taxes that we would be losing from the income taxes and how it would affect other businesses in Lakewood. So, I would ask the council to have their assistants prepare a bona fide proposal, request for proposals that would be open and not slanted to steer the business to one particular possible proposer. So, I would end my remarks. Since I went a few seconds over the last time I spoke, I'm giving you a few seconds back. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Mr. Graham, thank you for your service to council from 1980 to 1991 and your service on the Lakewood Hospital Association Board, which you also served on. Thank you. That brings us to the conclusion of public comments. Are there any announcements from council?
Madam Chair. Just real quick. I might not have been clear on my communication back in 12. I was hoping that that communication would be able to refer to Public Works Committee. And I apologize in retrospect if I did not make that part of my motion. So, is it possible for me to make a motion that that communication be referred to Public Works Committee? If not, that's fine.
First, we want to reopen the communication. Is there a second? All those in favor of reopening? All right. That motion passes?
Thank you. Again, just make a motion to refer the communication that I read in 12 on the docket to Public Works Committee.
Motion's been made in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion passes?
Thank you.
Are there any further announcements from council?
Madam Chair. The Board of Control today The Board of Control today concluded a contract with Huron Consulting. I wondered if either one of the council colleagues who were involved in that selection of a consultant for one of the members of the administration who were, could confirm the announcement for us and the significance of it, which is that council, in our continued efforts through your leadership, thank you, Madam President, to be thoughtful, be deliberative, to be fair, and not to prejudge the proposal before us, has enlisted an additional outside expert to help us do the very thing that many others have asked us to do.
Thank you. I'm glad you brought it up. I would ask the law director, and if there are further comments, are there any further comments from council? Director Butler, would you just review the acceptance, approval of the Huron Road? I mean, Huron.
Huron District.
Yeah. Excellent.
Madam Chair, thanks. Sure. The city has engaged Huron Consulting Services LLC, formerly out of Chicago, to assist it with the due diligence process involved in reviewing the terms of proposal outlined in the letter of intent of January 2015. There were four areas where Huron is going to be advising the city. First is an assessment of current healthcare trends, including population health and conversions of acute-care hospitals into ambulatory centers. Second is a review of subsidiary healthcare recommendations for Lakewood Hospital Association. Third is an analysis of the 1996 definitive agreement with the, that is, the lease agreement of the Lakewood Hospital Association and the definitive agreement between the Lakewood Hospital Association of Cleveland Clinic. And the fourth is an analysis of Lakewood Hospital's financial position. So, we anticipate that Huron is going to be undertaking its work in a very, very near term, within a matter of days, and we'll have some reports back to City Council in short order.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Important work of council members.
Thank you. I just wanted to indicate my sincere appreciation from my council colleagues and for Director Butler for sort of leading us through this R and P process, which is available to the public, indicates the four points that the director already outlined for us, the council members' jurists and marks, and I was able to work with them, again, as well as Director Butler, on some of the interviews for these consultants, and really happy that this was solidified and formalized just a couple of days ago, and that we're going to be moving forward. And this will give council so much information from which to build our formal deliberations on when that time comes. So, just wanted to thank my council colleagues for hooking up with me and the communication related to this so many months ago, and I'm so happy and grateful for the opportunity to move forward with this. So, thank you.
Are there any further comments from council? Thank you. Some of you will note that I pulled a letter off the docket, and it will go back on the docket, I think, sooner or later. We do have a responsibility to move forward. To all those of you who are here every week, thank you for participating, for taking your citizenship in Lakewood seriously. For all those of you paying attention to this, one way or another, we are going to get through this. We are all concerned that Lakewood, you know, hit the 21st century running, and we just don't agree always on how we do it. I believe we need to move forward, and we need to get a timeline together, and I think that that's where we're headed. So, so more deliberation, more research, more civil conversation, and we're all going to get through this. Are there any announcements from the administration?
Taste of Lakewood is Sunday on Chamber of Commerce, Vice President.
Indeed, it is. And there will be a lot of, I think they're having a lot more booths there, and please pay, when you go up there, stop at the booths of civic organizations and take note that there's going to be a Birdtown Churchwalk booth up there. So, take a look at it so that you can participate in that. Thank you.
Reminder, meet the trucks.
Oh, meet the trucks. Don't forget to meet the trucks. If there's no further business, council will adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion passes.
Thank you.